He's relaxed. He's got this down.
Well, he's had it ready for a long time.
I don't know. I see you typing.
We are live. Call this workshop to order and we'll start this off with our workshop with their budget from Mr. Bob Ford.
Good afternoon. Bob Ford, Chief Financial Officer. So tonight, we're going to do a couple of things this afternoon. We're going to go through, for about an hour, go through the budget, both the operating budget and the capital budget. And then we'll go into the discussion on the CIST. You should have all the information in front of you. I printed out the PowerPoint that we're going to talk through. Jake and I are going to tag team this. I'll do the operating side. He'll do the capital side. Finish up with debt and debt service and then we'll move right into CIST. So with that said, let's see if we're working here. Here we go. So fiscal year 2026 is going to be a really big year for the city. I mean, the wastewater treatment plant will come online in the fall. We've got a new building that's going up next door and we'll be in that new building, we think, sometime in December. So we'll have a full year in the new space next year. We've got a new ERP, new payroll, HR solution coming up, new utility billing, and not to mention a new city administrator. So a big year for the city coming up and a big year from a budget perspective. So let's spend a little time talking about the 26th budget. Specifically, I started out by just reminding you of the process we go through every year. We have really streamlined the process over the last couple of years. We've gotten it down to where literally we can produce a budget in about two months. We really started the process on the 4th of August this year. It went even smoother this year than it did last. And we were able to get the package out to you, council and mayor, back on the 6th of October to give you enough time to review before this session. So let's talk about highlights of the 26th budget. So from a consolidated operating surplus perspective, we're looking at a consolidated surplus of $6.4 million. So I'll just walk you through the highlights, then we'll spend a little more time drilling a little deeper and then we'll spend quite a bit more time drilling deeper on the revenue and the expense side. And then Jake will pick it up and walk you through the capital side. But once again, operating surplus of about $6.4 million. And over 75% of that operating surplus, for the first time, is coming from the utility billing environment, specifically the water and the wastewater funds. And specifically, it's a result of the rate increases that we put in place over the last couple of years and the timing of those cash balances starting to build before we start to, in fact, deploy the water fund and the funds for the incremental wastewater side. Consolidated capital surplus, which Jake will spend quite a bit of time talking about, $691,000. We've got capital expenditures budgeted at $50 million for the year. And we're going to fund those $50 million of CapEx from cash off the individual funds' balance sheets of about $12.9 million. Transfer from the CIST of two, grants of an additional $1.2 million. SRF debt specifically for the wastewater treatment plant will be another $30.5 million of the sources. Sales tax revenues, specifically, as you'll recall, we have sales tax revenue that funds our operating budget and also funds our capital budget. On the capital side, it's coming from, FIRE is bringing in capital resources through a sales tax revenue source. Parks has a capital improvement sales tax specifically designated for capital investment as well as the citywide CIST. Debt will go from about $77.8 million at the beginning of 2026 on a projected basis and will end the year a little over $100 million in debt, specifically because we will have deployed all of the SRF money at that point in time. So, and with that, we'll also see our cash balance over the year start to deplete. In this year, with about almost $17 million in cash. And by the end of next year, that cash balance will be down to about $10 million. So let's drill a little deeper on the operating side and on the capital side. So once again, if you look on the left-hand side of this page, the operating budget is broken into two components, revenues and expenses. And once again, remember, not all of the city's sales taxes are captured on the operating side. Some are captured on, as a source of funding on the capital side. So city sales taxes that fund operations, about $10.9 million. Fees, licenses, rental income, as well as program revenue, another $4.4 million. Grants, pretty de minimis, interest income, et cetera. The important thing I want to point here is is that for the first time, utility billing revenue is now above $10 million. We're going to be sitting at $15 million for the year. So for a total operating revenue budget of $40 million, and $40.7 million. On the expense side, debt service, $4.9 million coming up for this upcoming year. And once again, we're starting to deploy the SRF money at this point in time. For the residual period of '25 and '26, the SRF balance outstanding will only have to pay interest until we get to 1-1-27 and we fully deploy the plant. At that point, we will notify DNR that the plant is fully deployed. At that point, they will finalize an amortization schedule, which will show both principal and interest being repaid beginning in 2027. So we'll go from our projected interest expense on SRF for this upcoming year is about $660,000. We'll go from that in the form of debt service to something in the neighborhood of $2.3 million in '27. Departmental expenses are pretty de minimis. Operating expenses you see here. Personnel continues to be our largest single item expense item. We've divided personnel expenses, both indirect and indirect perspective. And then we've also got transfer out, which that's against transfers in. And this is the money that the general fund provides to both FIRE and to police as a revenue source to them, but an expense to the general fund. On the capital side, once again, as I mentioned, we're going to spend, we're proposing to spend about $50 million for next year. $41 million in capital projects, vehicles of 5.6, debt service of 519,000. Once again, this is the Parks debt service because it's specifically designated. Those funds are specifically designated as capital funds. Departmental specific expenses and transfer out, which is really the CIST transfer out of its bucket, which is a source of funding on the other side for the various funds. Once again, sources, as I mentioned, $12.9 million in cash. City sales taxes, once again, are FIRE, Parks and the CIST. Debt advances, specifically the SRF money. Interest income, pretty de minimis on the capital side. Miscellaneous revenue and the transfer in, which is reflective of the monies coming from the CIST going to the various funding of the various funds. But once again, we showed you an operating surplus of $6.4 million. A capital surplus of about $691,000 for a consolidated net surplus forecast in '26 of $7.1 million. If we start to drill down a little deeper, let's start on the revenue side. What we've done here is we've broken out the various revenue sources. And if you'll, I've identified them, both revenue sources for the operating budget as well as the capital budget. So we're showing taxes, both sales taxes, property taxes and other taxes of $16.4 million. And then other revenue, program revenue. So this is specifically admissions to the rush, concession revenue, community development revenue, fees. Those kind of things are flowing through that bucket. Utility billing revenue, $15.3 million. Sales tax, miscellaneous revenue of a pretty de minimis amount of $393. Once again, for a total operating revenue of about $36.5 million. On the capital side, we've got those three separate capital-defined, capital-defined revenue sources from sales taxes. Parks CIST of a little over $1 million. FIRE sales tax, $535. And the citywide CIST of a little over $1 million also. In the, on the top of the next page, what I've done is I've taken that revenue information and kind of ranked it from high to low. And once again, you can see utility billing, for the first time, is sort of our number one contributor to the revenue of the city. For almost 40% of our revenue will be coming from the utility billing revenue. Sales taxes represent about 35%. Program revenue, about 11%. Other taxes, around eight. Property taxes at six, et cetera. So for a total of $39.1 million in total revenue for 2026.
So your utility billing, you say that for the first time, that's our number one. Is that a good thing?
It is a good thing because, once again, up until this point, I'll use water, the water fund as an example. The water fund was barely a break-even fund. We could barely fund operations and we had no money for capital investment. What we've done, as you know, last year, we raised our rates. And those rates are put in place so that over the next 15 to 20 years, we can build about $85 million in cash, equivalent cash over that period of time because we have an $85 million capital budget for water. So this starts building that cash balance so that when we have a capital requirement for water or an additional capital requirement outside of the wastewater treatment plant, we've got the money to fund it, as opposed to having to go into debt again.
So I guess the question is, for municipalities like our size, would you rather see the sales tax income better or the utility billing? Or which would you rather see? Or does it matter?
Well, I think it depends on where the investment is going to happen over the next 15 to 20 years. I think we've starved the investment, specifically in the water fund, over the last 15 to 20 years. We need to start investing that infrastructure. We started investing in the wastewater treatment plant and that infrastructure, but there's still other infrastructure related to that wastewater fund that still needs to be funded outside of the wastewater treatment plant over the next 20 years. And we'll spend some time talking about the capital improvement plan, which this year, we've expanded from a five-year plan to a 10-year plan. So we're starting to build a more strategic vision of the future and look at those capital needs that are required over the next 10 years to say, how are we going to pay for this? Once again, this is, by raising the rates that we did back in '23 for wastewater and in '24 for water, this starts to put in place a sinking fund, if you will, for future capital investment for these two proprietary funds.
Thank you.
Let's drill down a little deeper and talk about city sales taxes. On this page, we've broken out sales taxes and given you some historical information going back to '22 through '26. Now, once again, the purpose of this data, really, and this chart, is to show that really, for the last three years, city sales taxes have been pretty flat. If you look at the growth rate between '22 and '23, we had about a 1.1% growth rate with and without the marijuana tax, which didn't go into effect. But if you, at that point in time, but if you look at '23 to '24, we had a pretty significant growth in that period of time, growth of 3.7% year over year. But 1% of that growth was, in fact, the fact that we implemented a marijuana tax and that was a new tax. So if you backed out the marijuana tax, we actually saw growth in that year of 2.7%. If you look '24 to '25, what we have budgeted is we really have budgeted zero growth for the year. And it's, we're about on par to achieve zero growth in '25 as compared to '24, based on the budget. If you backed out marijuana, it's actually, it's actually negative growth for this year. And so, given that, we have taken a very conservative stance in terms of the growth rate for forecasted fiscal 2026 and we're assuming no growth, except for the growth in the marijuana sales tax. Operating budget and expanding on the utility billing revenue, this is pretty illustrative of what we would have expected to have seen. If you go back to '22, our revenue in total for the two proprietary funds was sitting at $6.2 million. By the end of '26, we'll have seen that number more than double. Once again, we've seen, specifically on the water side, pretty significant increases in rates, specifically, as we mentioned, Dan, to really build that sinking fund so that when the next water tower comes up or the next infrastructure for a new development comes up, we've got the cash to pay for it instead of having to go back into debt. The same thing on the wastewater treatment, on the wastewater fund. We've seen fairly significant rate increases year over year, not as significant, obviously, as the water fund. But once again, those monies are specifically in place and those rates were done to support the debt service that we currently have and will have. One, we've got the Series 22 debt. And with the SRF money coming online, the debt service specifically to the wastewater treatment plant, round numbers, the Series 22 debt service is about $3 million a year. SRF is going to add another $2.3 million to that number. So we'll be sitting a little over $5 million in incremental debt service in the year 2027 where the wastewater treatment plant, the only way we could fund that was to borrow the money. I think on this one, just the importance is to highlight the fact that the rate increases will finally start to do what we need them to do and that is to build cash for water and to provide cash to service the debt for wastewater. If we move on to the expense side on the operating, in the operating budget, we'll talk a little bit about the, kind of the big buckets. Personnel expenses, as we mentioned, are our biggest line item. Personnel expenses represent almost 60% of our total expense, as a percentage of our total expenses. Base salaries for fiscal 2026 are, we've built in a cost of living and a, as well as a merit increase for the year. Cost of living at 3% and a merit increase on average at 2% for a 5% increase year over year on the compensation, on the base salary side. Healthcare, the city, as you know, has always funded, or for the last number of years, has funded 100% of the employee costs. But in '24, we made the decision to pick up 50% of the dependent healthcare costs also. So we had, and we'll see some of these numbers in a moment. And in addition, for fiscal '26, we're going to see across the board about a 10% increase in our healthcare costs, which is actually much better than what they originally quoted us. And it's actually right about the industry average, what we're seeing across the United States, is about a 10% increase. Retirement benefits, as you recall, we upgraded our defined pension plan from L3 to L6 back in '25. And we maintain our 457 plan. But historically, in our 457 plan, the city just contributed without requiring a contribution from the employee. Now we require a contribution from the employee and we will match up to, well, 100% of that deferred amount, up to 4%. So in a nutshell, personnel expenses represent 56.2%, operating expenses 25%. Departmental expenses are pretty de minimis at 2.4. Debt service is sitting at 16.1%. If you were to take those numbers and layer in the debt service that we're going to see in '27, the debt service is going to go to 22% of our total operating expenses, which is why it's important that we put rates in place to build sinking funds and to build cash so that we don't have to continue to borrow money to fund the city, to fund our capital investment in the city. On the next page, we'll talk a little bit about, we'll drill a little deeper on the compensation and benefit side. I've given you four years of information here, two years of actuals, what we currently have budgeted for '25 and what we're proposing for '26. Couple of things I'll highlight. If you'll look at, in the year 2024, healthcare. Healthcare went from $868,000 in '23 to a little over $1 million in '24. That's driven, one, by more people being employed by the city. Two, the cost of healthcare going up, but primarily, the city picking up half of the dependent healthcare costs as opposed to, in the prior years, the employee paid 100% of that. Look at retirement. If you look at '25, you'll see an increase from where retirement was about 13.8% of the total compensation and benefits summary. Now, in '25, it went to 15.2%. Once again, we went from an L3 to an L6 plan. And in that environment, we see the increase year over year. The additional thing to look at is that in the salaries, temporary, seasonal and part-time, if you look at 2026, what's currently projected in the proposed budget, you'll see that that number continues to climb and it's really reflective of a couple of things. One, we just have more seasonal employees, specifically for parks. We need more people to run the rush. The rush is bigger. We've got more going on. We've got more seasonal employees. And the cost to employ those seasonal employees on a per-head basis has gone up over time. Once again, staying with employees, staffing, et cetera, et cetera. This is just a chart to show how the city has grown over the last four or five years, looking at where we began in '22 and where we're proposing to end '26. We've gone from beginning employees at the beginning of 2022 of 139 and we're going to end up at 160, 161, 162 employees. Once again, at the bottom of the page, if you look at healthcare, you can see that healthcare in the change from '23 to '24, healthcare per employee went up 21.4%. Once again, tied to the fact that the city picked up half of the dependent care costs at that point in time, as well as we're seeing more employees and we are seeing a situation where the cost per employee is just going up. Same on the retirement side. You see, once again, the amended budget that we showed that for '25, we saw an increase in the average cost per employee on retirement. It went up '24 to '25 by 12.4%. Once again, L3 to L6. So that takes us to the end of the, sort of the overview of the operating budget. Once again, this operating budget generates a positive operating earnings of about $6.4 million, which is significantly bigger than last year. But once again, that is being driven primarily by the utility billing rate increases and that, those rate increases are specifically driving though that cash will be put into a sinking fund for future capital investment. So any questions on the operating budget before we get to the capital side? And we'll also take a little short break here so you can grab something to eat and then we'll, assuming it's here.
It's going to make you really popular.
Yeah, I know. So questions on operation, operating budget?
Just thought, this is more for HR, but from our perspective, did the increase in the healthcare and the dependent healthcare, has that increased our retention rate? Was that a benefit? Is that a positive?
It's a huge positive. In fact, we got the preliminary results this morning from the wage analysis and we are the regional leader in healthcare. So, and our benefit side, which includes the healthcare. So it's been a huge win for us because we are falling behind on salaries a little bit that we're going to have to work on. But looking at the total compensation package and seeing what we're doing for the benefit side of things, we are, we're whole. We're very competitive.
And does that increase our retention or decrease that? I mean, are people saying, hey, I love this. I'm going to stay here for longer?
Yes. I mean, it's hard to look at retention because we're going to end the year at a high turnover rate. But the turnover, that's not necessarily a bad thing. But overwhelmingly, I can tell you that it is near and dear to employees' hearts, the benefits that we offer. And in fact, recently, we just hired an employee and I don't sit in on interviews anymore, but I sat in on these and that is the reason they wanted to even apply here.
Very good. Okay. Thank you.
What is the turnover rate by any chance? Do you know? Off the top of your head?
I don't have that number with me right now, but the last time we ran it, which was about a month ago, we were running at about 13%. I'm anticipating to end the year at 15% to 17%.
Other questions on the operating budget? Is food here?
No.
Okay. Well, sorry Jake. No food. You're going to have to.
I have to do this hungry.
I'll just go fast. I'll go here. Capital's a fun stuff anyway. So Jake Jones, Finance Manager. Dan, I'm going to start, I'm going to address the question you asked a little bit, just to add a little bit to it. One thing I think is important to note when you're comparing utility billing revenue and sales tax revenue is they don't cross over. So the utility rates have to be what they are to fund those operations. So they're really separate from sales tax altogether because we can't use sales tax to fund the utilities and we can't use the utility revenue to fund the rest of the city. So one being higher than the other is just a product of what we need to run those utilities. So I just wanted to add that. Yeah, absolutely. So now we'll jump into capital expenditures. This is, this is the more fun part of the presentation, at least I think so. So I won't go over the totals. Bob kind of covered that in his overview. But we'll start to drill down a little bit specifically on some of these projects. So general fund is usually pretty minimal. A lot of the times, it's just spending money for other funds. So general fund's going to contribute a little bit to the JR Martin Park project. And that's going to be the big capital focus for the Parks and Recreation Fund for next year. Obviously, if you've driven by there, they've already got fencing up and construction is underway. So the number we've got plugged in there is our anticipated number for what we'll spend next year. Granted, we're going to spend some this year, so that number could get adjusted in a future budget amendment, just depending on where the, where we end this year at versus where we're going to start next year at. Jumping down to police, biggest expenditures for police is always going to be their vehicles and equipment. A thing we're doing next year, the last few years through the CIST tax, we've been able to purchase three vehicles a year for them. Next year, we're actually doubling it. We're going to get six. And what that's going to do for the police department is it's going to get to where every officer has their own, which will do a couple of things. It's going to, for one, if some of those cars that are on the road 24/7, they're accumulating miles a lot faster, so we got to. miles a lot faster, so we got to replace them faster. So getting this six in one year will slow down that curve, and I won't steal Bob's center for later with the CIST tax, we'll talk about future plans for that, but this will be a good start. And then, you know, Chief Sells and I ran the numbers, and really, the number we need to be at to stay on top of the fleet is probably closer to like five a year, but this six for next year will put us in a good spot. Next is the fire fund, biggest expenditure there for next year, the ladder truck is, you know, knock on wood, hopefully it's, oh, he left, Dwayne's not even here. Hopefully will be delivered by the end of the year next year. If you want to hear a long sob story, you can hear Dwayne talk about the market for fire trucks, because there's a lot of weird stuff going on there. Basically, prices are going up, lead times are long, so we're hoping that we'll get that by the end of next year. It was originally supposed to actually be December of this year, but it's got pushed out an entire year. Next, we'll move into the builds fund, so water first, AMI, so that line item shows up in both water and wastewater. So what AMI is, it's a specific module that goes onto our water meters that allows us to read them remotely. So it's actually cellular technology. What that's going to do is it's going to put the information in our utility billing hands, our meter readers and our customers a lot faster, so that way, you know, leak detection, things like that, abnormal usage, we'll be able to spot that a lot sooner than we do now with people driving around with radio reads and manual. So that'll be a big project, we're anticipating to get most of it done next year, but there's a chance it'll bleed over into 2027. Next, on water list, we've got some water tower. SCADA is the software they use to kind of control all of the reeds and where the water's flowing from the towers and wells and what flows back into the treatment plant. So you see the SCADA line item on both water and wastewater, it's connected. The rest, wastewater, we've all talked about the wastewater treatment plant at nauseam, so this will be the last big push, it'll go live in 2026, so this is the last time we'll see a big amount for that treatment plant. And a slide later on, we'll kind of break down those costs over the years and how they've kind of flowed. Moving into streets, biggest one I'll highlight here is the street overlays. I know you guys are all familiar with our street overlay program. We've added to it for next year, so that's going to allow us to hopefully hit more streets next year, but Karen's team will obviously be in charge of who gets those, and you'll see that later, later next year whenever it's time for that. And then the CIST tax, kind of like Bob mentioned earlier, it's a specific tax for capital improvement projects, and what it does is it sends money to the other funds to pay for their capital projects. So I wrote down a couple of notes, the transfer to street that has to do with stormwater and the Heinz and ZD roundabout engineering that'll happen next year. Parks is for JR Martin, police is for the vehicles that we talked about, and the general fund is also for fleet vehicles, facility maintenance trucks and community development trucks. So we'll move on to the next slide. So, same thing here, this is, this is the same information, just viewed a little bit differently. So, funds across the top, categories down across the left. The only thing I'm going to mention here is, Bob already hit on it a little bit, but we do have a capital surplus in two funds, and I'll just reiterate the fact that that happens because those two funds have specific revenue sources that are capital only. And in the case of 2026, those outweigh what we're actually going to spend in those funds there by the surplus. Everywhere else, we're using existing cash or other funding sources that, sources equal uses everywhere except for those two funds. Next, Bob also mentioned that our CIP plan went from five years to 10 years. So first thing I'll talk about is just a clarification, that number for fiscal year 2026, the $50 million, $38,005, that number does not match the 2026 number on the CIP, and the reason is, is we basically just backed out the debt service that he already mentioned and those transfers. So whenever you're looking at the 2026 CIP document, which we'll get to it later, that is actual dollars that will be deployed for capital projects. The debt service and transfers, that is, that are dollars that we'll spend, but they're a little bit classified differently, so that's why there's a difference. But overall, the 10-year CIP plan, obviously, the goal there is to put some of these on a list to start planning for, so that way, you know, we can start to figure out how we're going to fund it. In certain cases, there's departments that control their operations, you know, parks is a good example. If they know that in 2030, they've got to spend X amount of dollars for a certain project, what can they be doing now in their operations to help build that cash surplus to pay for it, so that way we're not always going into debt every, anytime something comes up? Also, a couple of highlights we'll talk about on the top right, again, we'll talk about them whenever we get to the CIP document. But main ones I wanted to talk about, water towers. So we talked a little bit in Bob's presentation about, you know, the utility billing revenue is going up and what are we going to do with that? A lot of it is building cash for future projects that you can see in the CIP. So I'll quickly move through these next few slides. This is a highlight for the water, water fund specifically. So we've got two water towers that are planned, first one out by Convoy of Hope. We do have a $5 million congressional earmarks is going to pay for that, but the rest of it is going to be residual cash that's been built up through the water rate increases. Planning, we've got a little bit in the CIP for engineering for 2026 with construction starting 2028, and those take a while, and depending on timelines, these are always fluid, but that's, that's what our current plan is. And then the second water, water tower, the Frisco Water Tower, that is actually out by our PD building on the other side of town. This one, $15 million, water towers are expensive, and again, that's, that's residual cash built up from the rate increases. And a little bit shifted timeline on that one, engineering starting 2027, construction also following, following that. This slide hits on our wastewater treatment plant projects. I know everybody's probably seen these numbers, but it's good to kind of break down what years the money got spent and how it was funded. And with that go-live date in 2026, this will be the last year we have these big projects on here specifically for the treatment plant, but just highlighting, you know, we've got a total of 140 million there and then how to break down there on the funding. So that SRF debt is what Bob talked about, that's going to be the last stretch that gets us through, and then that'll show up next year debt service-wise whenever we're on the hook for the interest and principal payments. Next slide is just a little bit of information on how the street capital projects get funded. They don't necessarily have a dedicated capital sales tax themselves, but they do have their own transportation sales tax and property taxes that help pay for it. Currently with the CIST, some money is allocated, like I mentioned earlier, that goes to them, plus there's grants and developer agreements that will come in and fund some of these projects as well. Last slide is just pointing us to the CIP, so that's the bigger document that's in front of you. So if you have any questions specifically on any of the numbers we have seen already on what that actually means, we've got it broken down in this document. So the first page, that's just on the top there, that's the same summary that was on the first slide whenever we were talking about the 10-year CIP. But if you flip over, it's fund by fund. So the first one, this totaled $279 for 2026, that's the same number we saw earlier, but this is the actual list of projects that make up that number. So there's the trucks that I mentioned that are, they're getting paid for by the CIST fund, and there's other miscellaneous things that have to do with building upgrades that are along in the general fund. Moving on to the next one, I'll highlight Parks and Rec, they've, they've got the biggest CIP of all, of all the funds. That's because Chris and his team did a great job of getting in here and really starting to plan for the future. So, a couple of ones I'll talk about, obviously, we've already talked about the Loop at JR Martin, that's going to be their big one for next year, but you can see this long list of things that span out over the 10 years that, at least for our current plan, that's, that's what they're anticipating spending. And every year that we go through this, this process, we'll get a little bit more information, so 2027 will be the basis for next year's CIP, and we'll attack a year on the end, but we'll always be evaluating this time period. So it's, it's, it's good planning so we don't get caught flat-footed whenever it's time for these projects to come up. Next page is the spillover from, from, from parks, and then we get into police and fire, and I'll, I'll be pretty brief on these because it'll come up in the CIST conversation later, but mainly, it's, it's equipment, so it's the police cars we already talked about on the fire side, it's the ladder truck we talked about, plus starting to plan for potential Fire Station 3. Then moving forward to the builds funds, water and wastewater, we had those slides that talked about these briefly, but these are a little bit more detailed. One of the big ones is CIP 9, if you've heard about CIP 9 before. It's a total project estimated to be about $50 million, and on our current plan, we have it scheduled for around 2031. This is a pretty massive upgrade as far as like the water and sewer lines and how our entire system works. So that's, that's a big one, and that will come up at some point, but it's, like I said, it's already on our plan, we're already starting to plan for it, along with the water towers and the AMI upgrades, all of that, it is in here, and the numbers match what we've already seen before. Street fund, we've got Highway MM in here, you know, some of that has, has a lot to depend on state funding and how that all works out, but another one I'll highlight, the overlays that we already talked about, we've got those amounts every year for our CIP because we'll always be doing that throughout. But other than that, you can see the entire list of projects and what they make up, so if there's any specific questions on any of them, happy to answer them now or the next time we meet, but that is all I have for capital, so if anybody has any specific questions, be happy to answer them. Yep?
So, and we talked about, you know, saving for future expenses in the wastewater, you know, down there on, on the street funds, I don't, I guess, do we not foresee as much of that? I mean, I see we see the 750 going forward, but I know we've been playing catch-up over past, you know, probably a little bit neglect of, of roads. I'm just kind of curious if we're looking at anything like that similar on the, on the street fund side?
Yeah, it's, it's similar. Basically, any residual cash that we have every year in the street fund ends up going to overlays, so a lot of that depends on the operating results, but it is a project. But a lot of what Karen's team does with new roads and such, there's a lot of partnerships with developers that end up paying for that, so there's a lot more cost sharing available in the street fund, whereas the water, wastewater, it's all on us. But yes, to your point, that's why you see the number has gone up, and it'll continue to go up hopefully as sales tax, hopefully we can see that rebound a little bit. But realistically, a lot of the, any residual cash on the operating side for the street fund, that's where it's going.
Yeah, the only income source is the sales tax for it.
Sales tax, property tax, any grants, other things, but it's mostly the sales tax, correct? Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, that was it.
All right, hopefully, hopefully food's here now?
Yes.
Okay.
Food's here? All right.
Let me finish the last two slides.
Oh, sorry.
And then we'll take a break, and then we'll go into the.
Grab dinner, and then we'll go into the CIST discussion. So, once again, we talked a lot about debt, and this is the debt summary showing where we are projected to be, 1231, 25, and then the advances, specifically the SRF advances, and then where we'll end the year. So you'll recall from the highlight page that we talked about when we first started, we're, we're going to start the year next year, or end this year of '25, at $77.8 million of principal outstanding on the debt side, and we'll end next year at a little over $100 million of debt outstanding. Debt service calculation is right next to it, showing that we're going, that debt service next year is at $5.3 million, $5.4 million in total. Some of that is funded from capital revenue, some of that is funded from operating revenue. Just recall our discussion, there is, the debt service for this coming year, for '26, specifically on the SRF, is interest only. We will see principal come into play in 2027, and so we'll see that number go from about $660,000 this coming year to a little over $2.3 million in 2027. And last but not least is the debt service schedule, '26 and beyond, which basically shows that we have $146 million of debt service over the next 20 years, specifically around these projects as we've outlined them. And we'll talk a bit more when we get to the CIST, how potentially there may be some additional debt that may need to come online down the road, but this is just to keep us all calibrated as to where we are from a debt service perspective and what it looks like from now through 2053. So, questions on anything, operating capital, debt, debt service, happy to answer anything? I know that in the package that we sent out on the 6th of October, you have a detailed fund by fund, line by line, operating and capital budget laid out. So you, in addition to the information we provided on the CIP, by fund and by line item, you also have that detail in the operating and capital budget information we sent out in the, in the prior submission we did on the 6th of October.
The SRF debt, super low interest rate, right?
126.
And what was the amortization? Was it, I can't remember what.
22 years.
22 years, okay. And we had the ability to accelerate it, but probably wouldn't because it's such a low.
We do. Really, we could accelerate at any point in time by going to DNR and asking them that we'd like to pay it off early. However, there is, I think it's 2031 or 2032, we can start paying it down. I mean, I'd rather pay off the '22 debt before I paid off the SRF money.
Yeah, absolutely, great, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Grab some dinner, and then we'll talk about the CIST.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and thank you, Mr. Ford. We'll take a short break.
Well, good evening again. We're going to talk a little bit about the capital improvement sales tax. And specifically, I'll give you the punchline. We're going to discuss a renewal and a repurpose of the capital improvement sales tax from a citywide CIST to a public safety CIST. So just to give you a little background, you know, what is the CIST? It's a quarter cent. Capital Improvement Sales Tax was renewed in October of 2017 for a period of 10 years, and it will sunset September 30th of 2027. At the time when it was renewed, was it a new tax? No, it wasn't. It replaced a quarter cent Stormwater Capital Improvement Sales Tax. So it was a, just a trade or a repurpose of that, at that time, from Stormwater to a citywide CIST. It's a quarter cent, so for 2025, we're going to generate just a little over $1 million of revenue out of the CIST. And we showed you quite a bit of data around how we're going to deploy that, that capital in 2026 and beyond. And the purpose of the CIST is to fund infrastructure and departmental capital improvement projects So back in 2017, I wasn't here, but in going back and looking at the data, we identified a number of projects that the CIST would in fact potentially fund. It didn't mean that we were going to fund all of these, and there were dollar amounts that were floated, but the idea was, these are some projects that we will look at funding out of the CIST. An ADA Transition Plan, the Animal Shelter, Digital Radios, Downtown Revitalization, Fleet Vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. So where are we? I tried to give you a bit of a, maybe kind of a dashboard of where we are. On the ADA Transition Plan, that's primarily going to be grant funded, but those dollars that we have committed from the CIST have been spent. Animal Shelter, as you know, we built an animal shelter. It costs more than we thought it was going to, but we funded it out of the CIST. Digital Radios, Downtown Revitalization. We've done some work on Downtown Revitalization. At the same time, the city has done quite a bit towards, you know, for instance, our contribution to the Historical Society of the land, so they can build a building, would go toward that Downtown Revitalization project. Fleet Vehicles, the Gateway Sign, all of the things you can see here in terms of, have we accomplished what we generically set out to do? And the answer is yes. Stormwater projects, we have some money set aside in the 2026 budget. And then below that line are projects that were not originally contemplated, but that we were able to generate enough sales tax revenue to pay for the Sawyerland Purchase, or part of the Sawyerland Purchase for Parks and Rec. Additional police cars have been set aside for next year, as Jake mentioned to you earlier. Part of the J.R. Martin Park Project Upgrade, it's coming from money set aside, half a million dollars from the CIST going toward J.R. Martin, as well as East Hines. We've got money set aside for that also. The next page is pretty informational. It shows you total sources and total uses of the CIST since its inception back in 2017. So in 2018, we showed the monies coming in, how we've spent those monies. So a little, almost $10 million over this period of time have, has either come in or is projected to come in either in this budget year or the remaining two years. And then we've outlined the uses by year of how the money has been spent. But the real, the real, I think the real important thing here is that as part of the capital improvement plan that we've been discussing tonight, that 10-year view, after reviewing the city's 10-year capital improvement plan, there really are two critical city departments' funding needs that stood out to us as a priority. One is the fire fund, and the other is the police fund. So if you think about public safety funding from an operational perspective, in 2022, the Citizens of Republic passed a quarter cent public safety sales tax to fund public safety operating expenses. Specifically, additional personnel, improved salaries and wages for existing and future personnel, as well as improved benefits for existing and future personnel. The public safety sales tax, as it's currently configured, is split 50/50 between the fire department and the police department. In 2025, the P S S T is budgeted to generate about $3.2 million in total. Half of that's going to police, half of that's going to fire. However, that revenue is not sufficient to fund all of public safety's operating needs. The police budget for, that we just went through and showed you for next year is $4.2 million, and the fire operating budget is about $4 million, for a total of $8.2 million. Therefore, the general fund and Green County provide an additional $4.7 million to public safety to complete the funding for public safety's operating budget. So the general fund in '26 will contribute $1.7 million to the police department, or the police fund actually in '25. These are our budgeted numbers. And $2.3 million to fire in '25. In addition to that, Green County, through the law enforcement sales tax, will contribute $713,000 to the, to the police fund in '25, so that we can complete the funding of the operations of those two truly important departments of the city. However, the public safety sales tax does not fund or provide funding for any of the capital needs for police or for fire. So with that backdrop, one of the things that we've been talking about internally is repurposing the sales tax revenue currently set aside either as a CIST revenue and also fire currently has an eighth of a cent set aside for capital. So what I've laid out here for you is the current CIST of a quarter cent, the fire sales tax of an eighth. So for a total, let's just look at the '25 data, the total for those two combined numbers would be $1.6 million, or three eighths of a cent. What we are proposing, or what we would like to talk about and discuss with you, is repurposing the CIST as well as the fire sales tax, and renew those simultaneously at the same time, renew those two taxes, so it's a no-tax increase. And that three eighths would be dedicated for the next 25 years to public safety. So what I've done is I've laid out what the new CIST, what we're calling the new CIST, which is three eighths of a cent, what it would look like, and then I split it 35%, 65% from police and fire. So this, this is just the math of how we get police with, in 2028, $577,000 to fund primarily police cars, and a little over $1 million to the fire department. That sort of sets the stage, and the idea here is to take the citywide CIST and repurpose it to public safety. Obviously, in the scenario that we talked about earlier, the police department has already laid out a 10-year capital plan that it, that it envisions that it needs primarily vehicles, but other capital needs for the police department, and the same for fire. And so this is just another chart to give you another perspective showing in '26, what police will, that we just walked you through as part of the budget process, $577,500. That's coming from the existing CIST, and it will go to fund six police cars and other capital needs for the police department. The sales tax revenue for fire in 2026 is specifically their one-eighth sales tax, specifically capital-related, and that, that money is, they've been building that capital over time. They've got, will have about $2 million in cash generated from that one-eighth cent sales tax. But we're going to spend $1,964,000 in 2026, specifically primarily a ladder truck, which, and what we've shown here is a funding gap and what the cumulative gap would look like if in fact we didn't have any additional funding sources. And so let's walk through the left-hand side, the police, starting in 2028. If in fact we repurpose this public safety sales tax, and this three eighths of a cent, if police were to receive 35% of that, their sales tax revenue in 2028 would be $577,485. Their capital needs that we've already identified in the capital improvement plan that we just went through for that year is $616,000. So their need is actually greater than what we are proposing here. So one, police would have to live within the context of their budget, but this would basically double the amount that they have historically received from the CIST to be able to fund their investment in their vehicles. You can see the same thing on the fire side. Today, fire gets one-eighth of a cent. That one-eighth of a cent is specifically capital-related, and what fire has been doing over the last three or four years, saving that money in, in plans of buying this ladder truck for $1.9 million. But at, but at an eighth of a cent, you're basically generating about a half a million dollars a year. And you'll see here in a moment, and we've already looked at it as part of the capital improvement plan, the 10-year plan that's been laid out by fire, they need $20 million to accomplish their objectives over the next 10, over the next 10 years. That's both vehicles and, and housing, fire, fire station. So I'm going to, I'm going to hone in on fire for a little while. So today, fire has a restricted cash account specifically identified where capital expenditures and that money sits on its balance sheet, and that money is that one-eighth of a cent fire sales tax. It's capital only, and that's how we're going to pay for the, the new fire truck. The issue is, if you, if you go to, and once again, I'm just trying to set the stage tonight to give you an idea of a way to fund a capital investment plan for public safety that's been identified by the public safety teams. And in a month from now, Chief Sales and Chief Compton will come back, and they will give you more definitive information about what their needs are over the next 10 years. And specifically, you're going to hear vehicles from the, the police department, and you're going to hear a fire station and more, and more expensive trucks from, from the, from the fire chief. But anyway, that being said, I wanted, in this, I'm kind of in the weeds here, so you're going to, you're going to have to hang in with me. But I wanted to give you a perspective of where fire is from a cash perspective. So the beginning cash for fire, at the beginning of 2025, on a restricted cash basis, they had $2.5 million of restricted capital sitting in their, on their balance sheet. And for the remaining, it's actually as of the end of October. For the remaining part of the, this year, they'll generate another $128,000 of sales tax revenue, but they need to buy a water tender. The one we have is, is not safe, it's not, it doesn't serve the needs of the fire department, and so we are going to buy, buy a water tender in the next couple of weeks. And we're going to pull $385,000 out of that capital, out of that fire sales tax bucket to fund it. So after we buy the water tender, they're going to have $2.2 million. We're going to set aside, we're going to designate that 300,000 of that is a reserve that they need to maintain going forward. That's going to leave them with $1.9 million at the beginning of next year. $1.9 million, we talked about their capital needs for 2026. They're going to spend $1.964 million in 2026, but in '26, they're also going to generate another year's worth of one-eighth of a cent sales tax revenue. So at the end of next year, they will have a new fire truck, and they'll still have $473,000 in the bank. This is important because the next chart is going to be meaningful. You need to kind of hang with me here. So at the end of '26, they'll have $473 in the bank, and their capital expenditures identified in the CIP that we just went through for '27 is only $59,000. They're going to generate another $540,000 of sales tax revenue from that one-eighth cent sales tax. And so at the end of this period of time, at the end of, of 2027, they're going to have $955,000 in cash and a brand-new ladder truck. Now, why does that matter? Well, it matters when you look at the capital needs of the fire department over the next 10 years, how much money they're going to have to begin with, and how much money they have to fund any capital investment going forward. So once again, I know we're kind of in the weeds here a little bit, but it's important to understand and kind of set the context with regards to fire and fire's needs. And specifically, in the capital improvement sales plan, capital improvement plan that we've identified for the next 10 years, over the next couple of years, we know that fire is going to need for a new fire station, which we own the land next door. That new fire station, round numbers, windage and elevation, about $9 million to build that fire station. And we need two additional fire trucks to go along with that, and to replace some existing rolling stock, and as a result, there's another $3 million. So we really need $12 million to, to accomplish part of the capital improvement plan that's been identified by the fire department over the next few years. And beyond that, they have an additional need. I've already told you that their 10-year capital improvement plan said, we need 20 million bucks. There's 12 of it. We're going to need another eight somewhere down the road. The only way, even if we were to do what I've described here, and we were to combine the two sales taxes, the fire sales tax and the existing CIST, put them together, go to the voters, renew that, and police were, were to get 35% of that, fire were to get 65% of that, fires' cash flow on an annual basis, its revenue on an annual basis would double. It would go from about $500,000 today for capital to $1 million for capital. But how long would it take them to save enough money to build a new fire station, 12 million bucks, new rolling, in rolling stock, and then an additional eight a couple of years after that? As a result, this, you'll recall that in our discussion on, on debt, one way we get there is we borrow the money. We borrow the money to accomplish an expansion of the capital investment that we need for the fire department, and specifically to build the new fire station and to put more fire trucks in place. And in doing that, you sort of back into the numbers, if you will. If they have about $1 million a year from the proposed change of the CIST, then how much debt can they support? And so what this, what this plan shows you is that it starts out with the sales tax revenue starting in '28, which is their 65% of the proposed three eighths cents, and it's, so they've got $1 million coming in per year, round numbers. The 10-year CIP shows that in '28, they need $12.1 million. So we're going to borrow $12 million. The debt service on that is $1.1 million. That means the annual funding gap, if I look at total revenue in, plus debt issued, i.e. cash in the door, less the CIP, plus the debt service, I'm in the hole $127,000. Oh, but remember, we started that year with almost $1 million in cash. So if you look at that last column, that last column is taking, where we're starting with cash, and it's starting to deplete that cash over time. So what this analysis does is it looks at total sales tax revenue in, it looks at the 10-year CIP that's been identified by the fire department, and in that, in order to accomplish their needs, and given the cash that we have, we borrow $12 million in '28, we'd borrow another $8 million in '32. This is the debt service, and it shows that over this period of time, we would have sufficient capital to be able to accomplish their need specifically around additional capital investment. I say all of this to say, make one point. Without the CIST being repurposed, there is no way to fund public safety's capital needs. The current public safety sales tax only funds their operating needs. And the only way that we can build an additional fire station is to either save the money for the next 20 years, and I, Duane's going to come and say, I need it before the end of 20 years. So if that's the case, we'll need to borrow the money, and if we're going to borrow the money, then how much can we borrow, given the kind of revenue that we would have in place to make the debt service? Their current one-eighth cent is not enough to accomplish the plan. That's really all I wanted to say about the CIST. I, I think it, it, it provides a mechanism to allow us to make an investment both on the police side and the fire side over the next 10 years, to put them in a much better position from a capital investment perspective, specifically the equipment they need to do their job in order to accomplish the objectives of the city over the next 10 years. Duane has got all kinds of data as to why that's the right location, and its ISO ratings, and call times, and all the things that explain why a new fire station is needed, it's needed soon, and it's needed next door. He'll provide that information to you, but this is how he would fund it. If you think that's a good idea, this is one way to fund it, and it's probably the best way to fund it. Questions? And once again, this is the discussion tonight. It's just, here's an idea. But I, once again, it, repurposing the CIST to focus on public safety, I think makes a ton of sense.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Ford?
So we've got Station 3 planned out, ready to go, and I'm already seeing Station 4. Is that just?
Station 4 is, Station 4 is in the 10-year capital plan. Now, we keep telling Duane, push that out, push that out. It may end up staying in the plan, because there will come a day when we'll need it. Will we need it exactly in the year in which we've identified it? Maybe not. But once again, we're pretty comfortable around the numbers that are going to be required over the next couple of years. We may find that that $8 million that we have is the second tranche of money that we would borrow in '32. Maybe we don't borrow it until '36. Maybe we don't need to do it until '37. But we do know that Station 3 and the rolling stock that goes along with that is a pretty definitive objective for the fire department over the next couple of years.
Do we have any other questions, comments?
So the, it matures in 2027, and the proposal, I know we're just now talking about it, would be to renew it earlier and for a 20-year period?
'25.
'25.
'25 to match the amortization of the, I, I looked at an amortization of $12 million over 20 years, and it's just, we just can't generate enough revenue to make that debt service payment, so.
You touched on a little bit, so in the past, this has been used for what?
It's been used kind of across the board. If you go back.
That was, that was what this was, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, if you look at, of the $9.8 million that we generated over the last 10 years, really the biggest expense has been, it has gone to fleet vehicles primarily to, to fire, I mean, to police. But the second largest thing beyond the East Hines $1.8 million is the Sawyerland acquisition, which we did, which was really an unplanned activity. We just had the revenue, we generated more CIST revenue than we had originally expected, and it, we were somewhat serendipitous that we had the cash, and the price was right, we bought the land.
So I guess my point is that the things that we identified previ, on the previous ballot, most of those were taken care of, all or some sort. And so we're not taking away from a, you know, reoccurring need.
No, we are not.
Yeah.
And once again, a number of the, of the activities, you know, for instance, we're comfortable that with the rate increases, and as Jake said, you can't mix sales tax revenue and utility billing revenue, but we're comfortable with that with the utility rate increases that we're putting in place, that we can, we can keep our proprietary funds and their necessary investment, we can keep those funded over the next 20 years. It's, it's the other funds, the other governmental funds that we have to look at. Parks and Rec, remember, they have their own capital improvement sales tax number. They get a quarter cent a year that goes to capital. Currently, it's funding the debt service on the Series 23 debt, as well as some incremental capital. We're going to use part of that, that residual money, if you will, to help fund the J.R. Martin expansion. But once again, Parks has set, they've got their own capital improvement sales tax number. This would, this would solidify public safety.
And so then, sorry, just to further clarify, so 25-year, going from a fourth to three eighths?
Going from, actually, it's combining a quarter and an eighth, because we're going to, we're going to renew the fire sales tax, the capital sales tax, at the same time. We're going to roll them together, so we're going from three eighths to three eighths.
So yeah, so no, no net increase?
No net increase.
To the public, increasing the time?
Correct.
Okay. And then, does it handicap us at all of, say, we get into year five, and we decide not to do one of the larger projects funding? Those funds then, are they, are we stuck with using those for those departments? Or how, how does that work, I guess?
Well, so if we in fact redefine, repurpose these two specific capital sales tax amounts, and we identify them as public safety, it needs to stay in public safety.
So we could go a wide range of things with?
We could do a variety of things, so long as it's within in the public safety realm.
Yeah, okay. So the chief says, you know, hey, we don't need the, we don't need the fire department an extra building now, but we need the truck, as long as it's in that category?
Absolutely. Yeah, we would, we would write the ballot language to give us enough flexibility to be able to put those dollars, if we just said 65% of the three eighths is going to fire, it's capital-related, whether it's a fire truck, a water tender, it's, it's infrastructure investment in the new firehouse, it doesn't really matter, it's a capital investment.
Thank you.
How do we come up with a 65/35 split?
Well, it was one of those where we identified the amount of money that they needed in the near term, $12 million, and we kind of backed into, I backed into, what does the debt service look like on $12 million over 25 years? What do I need? About a million dollars.
Any other questions, comments?
And you said that the later date, the chiefs will come and kind of talk more into detail about it, and their, how they come up with what the future needs are?
Absolutely. It's on the 18th of November, they'll be here to do another workshop and to present their, so mine was building a foundation tonight, theirs is to really fine-tune and, and be the point of the spear to show you why, and why next door, and why it's important to make this capital investment in public safety.
Do we have any additional questions from council, comments, concerns? Mr. Ford, Mr. Jones, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think this is everything that we had for our workshop. We're a little bit late, but a lot of great information, so thank you very much. At this time, we've, we need a short amount of time for everything to upload, so our council meeting is going to start just a few minutes late, but if we can get everyone to hang tight, this workshop is over, and we'll start as quickly as possible.